All right. I'll call to order a meeting, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular monthly meeting of the Alden County Planning and Zoning Commission. You know, we're getting a voicemail, it's Corning.
Present.
Ms. Hanning is absent. David is absent. Mr. Hankley here, and Mr. Plas present. Uh, we will move to who the agenda may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
On second.
For discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. We will move to approval of the minutes. They have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second then.
Small whiteboard discussion.
Sure.
If I may, um, I thought they were great, uh, all those links, maybe I'm kind of slow picking up the technology, but I've, uh, and I would, anybody who looks at any of our minutes now, they're dynamically linked, not just by the minutes to the audio, but by individual items. So, Mr. Williams, I assume you're responsible for that, uh, kudos, it works great. I'm convinced we finally cracked the minutes issue. So, thank you, good job, I had no comments on the content.
You said what was coming?
Yes.
All right. And I actually made this thing comment to Joe essentially, uh, in the office the other day, I felt the minutes outstanding.
Very great.
So, uh, any further discussion? In that case, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
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 That motion carries. I am pleased note Ms. Hanning has arrived. Good to see you.
Apologize for my late.
You're not so late.
Factoring the construction needs.
Main thing is you're here, so. Now we all feel better. Uh, disclosures of public interest, Mr. Corning, you have any? Ms. Hanning?
None.
Hankley?
None.
And I have none. Uh, in that case, our first formal piece of business here then, uh, past that, is taking off the table, the table, taking off the table, the Mitchell zoning disremitance EDA, that's zero line, that's two five.
We remove it from the table.
Now, second. Any further discussion? All of the favor say aye.
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 Uh, Mr. Williams.
Uh, yeah, I have no updates. So I guess ask questions or whatever you guys want to do.
Do we have any questions for staff?
Well, yeah, um, so I think the question last month was, was there a way to deal with the area of the road to get Mr. Mitchell up to the required ten acres?
No. Uh, this is the only way that to move forward with what he wants to do. Now you guys can deny it or approve it, but this is the, the way we have to go about it.
Okay, the road area just doesn't count.
Nope.
Any other questions for staff?
Sure, Mr. Chair, thanks, so you, you go first.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I think we, we tabled this, uh, maybe Commissioner Hanning should have gone first, I think it was her thought of, maybe we'll think of something, some creative solution. So as I've kind of tried to put my mind to it, your answer was within the current zoning, so I mean, if, if a person could create a whole new zoning to allow nine acres or something.
Yeah, but under the current rules.
Under the current rules. And, and I don't say that, like, that's something I would promote us doing. But another question and thought, when, when I get on the assessor's map, which a lot of us do, it lists that as a ten point three acre lot. So, not that it's going to solve the immediate problem, but I'm wondering, in general, can that be fixed? Cause that's part of this gentleman's difficulty was that he was, by his representation led to believe by the Realtor, that he had a ten acre lot, and everybody out there thought he had a ten acre lot, and, and if he had looked at the county's website, it would have said, you got a ten acre lot. So I, I think there's a lot of sympathy for, for how we came to this. So I guess I'm asking you, why, why doesn't it properly identify it, can it properly identify it, or can you tell us about that, that map?
Um, I guess, well, first off, we don't work for the assessor's office, we're not the assessors, I'm not sure how they function. But in theory, now that we have a survey, that gets recorded, and it gets updated. I don't know if that's how it works, but I think that's how it works. So I would like to think that gets fixed in the near future.
For that, for that.
For that parcel, right.
Yeah, I guess I'm, another thing we discussed a lot last month was the, the precedent, and, and if we say, well, ten's, you know, nine point two's close enough, and everybody out there who finds that they too have nine point eight acre lots says, oh, well, that I could go ahead and subdivide, we don't want to do that. So trying to, to, to cut the precedent is the other, my thought was.
Right, I think.
Can you guys ask the assessor to do that, or are you aware of other places where we're likely to run into this? And, and can, can we do something to help the public not come to this point?
This is one of the only subdivisions that I've seen, the only one really, that, the acreage isn't listed in each lot on the plat. And I think that's the big issue here. Going forward, I mean, obviously, we, we know that now, we've learned that. So if someone from Alamo comes in and talks to us and wants to do something, we'll advise them to make sure that it's the acreage that they need to have it, um, you know, get a survey first, before you jump into something we don't know about.
So in this case, had he come and talked to you guys?
Yeah, yeah, we told him it was ten point three three acres.
Okay, okay.
Um, because that's what we have to go by. But it's not. And so we have to go follow our regulations.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I'm, I'm inclined to, to approve this one, but my concern, as we discussed last time, was that, that we not let it stand for something going forward. So you've, you've mollified me considerably by saying, if the same thing came up again, you'd be in a position to say, look carefully, whether it's ten or not.
Yeah, do, do a little bit of homework first, yeah.
A little bit, and if there is some way for you guys to have some feedback to the assessor, and I don't, maybe they just can't work until the survey's done, the plat's there, but I just, I, I have, I feel for the guy who looks on the map like I do to see how big things are and tells him the wrong answer, so whatever, we could do to help folks out going forward. Then, just I guess while I've got the floor, on the comment letter that we got, just to work clear, Mr. Sherwood suggested it was a ten acre lot and they could legally split it into five, that's incorrect, right?
The letter?
The letter.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and the letter, uh, referred to the roads, roads as easements, but they are not part of the property, yeah, just clarify that, that's what we discussed last time, so I got that right?
Right.
Okay, and, uh, all right, those are just my, my comments on their comments, so I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did, did you meet with the applicant at all, or are you needing table meetings on?
Um, I called him yesterday just to let him know what was happening, but other than that, no.
So, so there, there were no conversations about other, other options?
There are no other options.
So I, I have heard from a resident of that neighborhood about another option, somebody else had to take to do this process. They had to buy six inches of property from a adjoining neighbor to come up with the acreage needed to do the lot split. Was that ever pursued or thought about?
I should say there's no easy answers. I mean, in that case, they have to get, in his case, three landowners that would, or I guess one, it depending on how much they give, but they have, he has to work with someone else to get a boundary line adjustment and get more land, I mean, so I guess that is an option, but it's not an option, like, we have an application in front of us, so that's what we're pursuing.
Right, no, but I guess that's, I guess the reason we tabled it was to provide an opportunity to pursue other ways of doing this, Mr. Ears.
So, I think that a solution like that, that is beyond the scope of this commission. You do not dictate ownership. That's a private transaction. What you have is a application in front of you.
Okay, so, but that is something that the planning staff have the ability to.
Right, Mr. Ears.
Yeah, um, I don't remember our conversation, but was that something we brought up when we originally talked? It seems like we would have said like, well, you can bring it up to ten, but I, I can't remember our conversation, so.
No, I've never.
Yeah, okay, cause like, for the most part, like, we're working with some other people and that's what we're telling them, so if we didn't say it in this case, then it's, I guess we didn't, but like, for the most part, that's something we bring up. You know, if you want to meet these criteria, these are, we usually give the options at the beginning, but it's been a while since we've met, so I, I don't recall what our conversation was.
Right. Just a different circumstance, we told them to go ahead with the subdivision before we even needed, knew it needed to be changed.
And the provision for variances on the zoning resolution, they don't, they don't encapsulate this kind of situation, it's, it's for building standards as.
Well, we, we talked about a variance, like what, what would be required for a variance, and uh, this is just like between me and David, but we determined that, uh, it would basically give special permission, that's one of the, the, uh, standards that we can't do in a variance. So basically giving special permission within a zoning district to go, you know, outside of the scope of a zoning district.
Cause it, it just seems like in this scenario with the, um, like the misinformation piece of things that Mr. Mitchell versus Hanning's had on, you know, that it was, you know, what rings out to me with the variance provision is that by no fault of the zone.
Right, I think we can all agree with that.
But, but you, you feel.
But there's more things that they have to mean.
That that provision outweighs the, or is, outweighs the other, because, because I, I still feel strongly that, uh, that this is a precedent-setting thing to allow small lot residential zoning in the, in a PG three area that isn't being served by a utility of some sort, or so close to the city boundary that it stands a chance of being served by a utility. And, and so far, the, um, the staff analysis has been silent on really defending that there is no, there is no similar zoning designation in this area, you have to go miles to get to a small lot residential zoning designation. And so the criteria for approval, it seems like it fails on that test. More to me, like, to me, the ramifications for doing that, and the ramifications countywide, for all those areas that are, that are zoned, uh, ranchette, um, that that's, that's a bigger implication to me than the idea that you're giving special permission to somebody for something that was clearly a, a train wreck of information. You know, that Mr., that Mr. Mitchell is, is the, is the victim of, but I feel like the solution that we've arrived at makes everybody else out in the county who enjoys, uh, lot sizes that are more protective of groundwater quality, because we're all on septic tank leach fields, that we're, we're sort of jeopardizing that countywide, I mean, that we're, we're talking about hundreds of households that could be, I think, harmed by, uh, supporting this decision and not coming up with another, another, um, way to address Mr. Mitchell's problem. And I guess the other thing that I, that I'm troubled by, as I said at the previous meeting, is that we're, we're looking to smaller lots in this area, but I, are they not non-conforming lots? I mean, aren't these small, smaller acreage lots, which have a zoning designation of ranchette now, they are non-conforming lots, and yet we're using that as a explanation for why it's okay to go down to smaller lots. We're, we're saying in essence that, uh, it's okay to, to add more non-conforming lots, kind of. I mean, so do, first of all, do you agree that the two lots to the south would fall under the category of a non-conforming lot?
Yes, they're non-conforming, but that doesn't mean that they can't put a house and all that kind of stuff on it, all that means is that they can't subdivide.
Right, no, they, they can, they can, they can definitely build a, a dwelling on the second lot of, of those two small lots. But our, but we're, we're saying by calling, like, the whole purpose of the category of a non-conforming lot is, you're sort of saying, this, this isn't the ideal, right, that this, this isn't what we're trying to do out.
It's not the ideal in that zoning district.
In that, in that zoning district, but, but here, here the, the staff analysis is saying, um, it's, we're, we're sort of justifying this by looking to the non-conforming lots and saying, because non-conformance exists, it's okay to add more small lots, I do.
No, I'm just looking at the area, I've seen smaller lots than what he has, what he's wanting to do even. Um, and, and saying that this is the way that he can do what he wants to do. All I'm doing is saying that this is an area of development that has development. What he wants to do, that I know of, nothing's changed, um, is add another lot. And we're looking at the area, it makes sense to me to add another lot, like, it doesn't hurt or, you know, help the area, in my opinion, and then this is the way to do it, so.
So I, I guess we're just.
It's, it's, it's up to you guys, I, I'm not the decision right here, you guys are the ones that say yes or no.
Okay, so, um, just doing a quick glance at the comprehensive plan. Um, if you look at what's required for small residential, rural residential, urban residential, the only requirement, the only land use in the, the comprehensive plan that requires water and sewer hookups is urban residential. Okay, so, small residential is meant for, um, properties with a well and a septic. Um, the range of lot sizes is two to, two to five acres, according to the comprehensive plan. Um, if you look at our zoning, the only required, um, area or, or zone that, that requires water and sewer hookups is urban residential. Small residential again is allowed to have a well and a septic on there, so that's not a requirement, it doesn't have to be near the city. I will also mention that there are, um, that all those small lots next to Lake Hattie are zoned small lot residential. Um, we, the Board of County Commissioners also approved, um, a lot off of Caryland Lane, small lot residential, which has no water or sewer hookups as well. So, so to say that this is setting a precedent, I don't know if it is, it's following the comprehensive plan, it's following the, the zoning, um, this is an option in the zoning to do this. I just, you know, I think that's information that you can, you need to consider when you're, you're considering this decision, so.
But, but we also need to consider that if we change it to that, the minimum lot size becomes two acres. And so even though Mr. Mitchell doesn't intend to do a bunch of two acre lots, he could.
Absolutely.
So.
The minimum lot size on a ranchette is two acres. You just have to average five.
Okay, but you can average more if you do small lot residential, and that is, that, we have to be okay with that, and that's, could be a problem.
Ms. Hanning, were you done?
Well, I guess the, the, the last thing, I guess I'm repeating from a previous meeting, I'm sorry, I'm.
No, it's okay to repeat actually, because we haven't told this, it's good refresh.
Okay, is in the.
Don't feel bad about that.
In the comprehensive plan, it is really oddly silent about the small lot residential. I mean, um, in terms of what the expectation is to, to be hooking up to future utilities, I, I just can tell you from my, my geological environmental background, that lots smaller than two acres or pretty much smaller than five acres, uh, don't have enough groundwater dilution to not result in groundwater contamination from septic tank leach fields, but I know we don't have a factual thing in front of us to rely on in, in making decisions that way. But if you looked at the literature, if you look in our community where small residential exists in Sherman Hills and the Laramie Plain subdivision, it bears true that these smaller lots will result in people having contaminated wells over time. Um, but the, the comprehensive plan talks about PG threes would generally rely on large lots. And just in the very name of small lot residential, we have the word small. And so it's, it, the comprehensive plan is silent on small lot residential having to have any particular, uh, future utility, uh, hope. But the, but the PG three clearly says large lots. And small lot residential is not a large lot. Um, and regarding the Lake Hattie, uh, properties, I'm, I'm imagining all of those predated the zoning that is out there, and so it was like, oh, let's, let's call it what it is, it's a bunch of small lots next to each other along the lake. I, I doubt that the, that the zoning came first and the houses came later, I think it was a matter of, the houses were there, the zoning followed, the zoning, um, acknowledged what existed. Um, so I'm, I'm not really heartened to, to think of Lake Hattie. I, I just still feel that, uh, as, as soon as, as soon as the numbers increase on the number of small lot residences that are nowhere near a utility, and not any, anytime going to be near a utility, um, we're gonna tip the, we're gonna tip the quality of life for the people in the, in the, um, in the extraterritorial part of the county towards a, a lower quality of life that they, that they didn't want. That's not why they bought their land, and I guess I think that's the general welfare that we and the Board of County Commissioners are supposed to be protecting. The, the general welfare of those hundreds of houses that are in like a ranchette type zoning. Um, and that, uh, I, I do see it as a prior, uh, a, um, what's the word I'm thinking of this, yeah, precedent, starts with a P, and to, to, to permit this zoning designation change. And so, so I guess back to my question about the, the requirements for approval that say, um, to not only be looking at the land use, but the cer, the surrounding land, the zoning designations, how do you justify going like two miles away? Um, and say that because small lot residential is over there, it's okay to put here? When, when the whole area is, uh, not a single small lot, um, zoning designation anywhere nearby?
Uh, because we're looking at use, uh, residential with residential. And I guess that's what we're looking at.
But it tells you to look at the land use and the zoning district designation, and like, we can all agree the land use is residential, but I don't think you can say that the zoning district designations of surrounding properties, those are the terms that we're supposed to be looking at, that test is not met. And, and so it's like, I, I understand the spirit of trying to help Mr. Mitchell, but I just can't help but feel like we're skirting a major part of the approval process and not looking at the zoning district designations of surrounding properties. So I'll, have you done now?
No, I, I see, I see where you're coming from, I, I get it. We're looking for a way to, you know, represent the applicant and do what he wants to do. I will also note that while you do bring that up, and I know it doesn't matter on this, this, uh, application, but that was passed, the zoning change, uh, or the zoning district amendment, amendments, uh, got passed last Tuesday, and the looking at these zoning districts around the property was removed. So that's no longer a binding effect. Um, and like I said, I know that doesn't matter for this application, but I will point that out.
Mr. Corning, something you'd like to add?
Not beyond the thing about he, what he could do, even though it's not what he intends to do, I think, and, and everybody else could do too, if they could get this change.
Well, we're on staff comments, we'll come back to what we want to do, right?
Yeah, we're sort of engaged in a general discussion now, so we're, we're in a mix, and that's fine.
Okay, um, well, I, I agree with Commissioner Hanning, and, and the idea that we have somehow set a precedent, my interest in supporting this would be as a one-off, under very special circumstances. And as I have opined with respect to these scattered rural residential soils all across the county, which I see as a stake and a relic, I, I hate the idea of, of small lot residential sitting there like that, but this is, becomes quite speculative, but might we coax a thought out of Mr. Ayers on the issue of precedence? And the concern would be, yeah, someone else comes in and they've got nine point nine acres and they want to do this, and we are all similarly opposed, and they say, well, you did it for this guy, does that have any, any legal gravitas?
It does not.
It does not, okay.
Yeah, um, from the secondary sources I have seen, um, it's pretty clear that ad hoc zoning decisions, um, which this is, or case by case, does not give, um, subsequent applicants, uh, grounds in an appeal of a zoning decision.
Okay, great, crisp answer, thank you.
Does that help?
For, for the moment, I think we've got some public comments.
Uh, I am pretty sure I didn't say anything about how I feel about this in our prior meeting, and I do so deliberately. I still argue my thoughts now, um, I'm in favor of recommending approval of this. Whether or not we, or the county commissioners ultimately approve this or reject this, uh, will not change the fact that change will be coming at some point down the road, if not now, some point, someone's going to want to subdivide, and at some point, they'll be approved. Um, I believe Joe has correctly noted that this is an appropriate area for further development. I would expect that if it's approved, uh, well, it doesn't necessarily mean anything will happen at once, because we'll have to go through a subdivision, and that will also be subjected to a thorough round of scrutiny, probably even a more thorough round of scrutiny. Um, and if that's approved, and if, uh, Mr. Mitchell does go ahead and subdivide and sell his property and someone builds a house, that will be some change, but I would speculate that change is not likely to happen at a quick pace out there, it'll take place over time. And while you thought this did not support the idea of the general welfare of the county, I actually take the other side of that, and I think it does. So we'll agree to disagree also. I, I think, again, to me, this is an appropriate area for further development, um, I don't think, uh, this is going to spur off a flurry of activity, you're on. At any time soon, I think change will, will happen slowly. Uh, anytime soon, I think change will will happen slowly, to the extent it does happen. And then also, uh, I do take note of the fact uh that in my recollection, when applicants stood before us, he didn't complain, he didn't whine, he didn't say, you know, why does this happen to me? Why am I being screwed? And um I think of some of the other situations we've seen where we have not had great behavior from applicants, and I am inclined to see this favorably uh and try to encourage that kind of behavior. So that's really all I have to say about this. We can have further discussion or we can have a motion here.
Let's pres- are we not having public comment?
Do we get to speak at all?
We had a public hearing in our prior meeting, uh, so we are not going to have further comment on this agenda item tonight.
Do you guys care what anybody thinks that lives out there?
We absolutely do.
I would not be adverse to hearing public comment.
I wouldn't either.
I move that we open to public comment.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, uh, all those in here say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will have public comment. So uh, for those who would like to speak, uh, please step forward one at a time, uh, state your name, where you live, and try to combine your comments to three minutes or less. Uh, so we'd like to come first. Go right here.
Want to come up first?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, name's Joe Wolf. I live in the Alakot subdivision. Um, I've got two points with three minutes. I'll do the best I can.
Sure.
Um, the first thing is I am very opposed to changing the the zoning. Uh, reason is I moved out of town for a reason. The zoning that's there currently was somewhat of an assurance to me and my family that that we were going to have five acre lots and then smaller. Um, I'd like to keep it that way. Um, you guys talked about the precedent. Um, it might be a different bunch of people. The next time somebody comes in and says, uh, well, my neighbor did it. Why? Why can't I? Um, I'd rather pull this horse back before he runs off. Uh, that's my concern there. The other one is this, which uh, what was your name?
Joe.
I'm sorry.
Joe.
My name is Joe Tim. Um, so the the paying the taxes, and I'm actually going to bathroom, Mr. Mitchell, on this one. Um, came from somewhere, so I did a little homework on the GIS map, which you can say is accurate or isn't, but through the acreage tool, if you do not include the roads, it comes out on Mr. Mitchell's lot, nine point six acres. If you include half the roads, ten point three. And that was the first try, just doing that. Um, I live in the subdivision on a corner lot, so I thought I'd do the same thing with me. I pay seven and a half acres taxes. If I do not include the roads, my lot is five point six. So I'd like an explanation from somebody if this is how it is. Why am I paying thirty percent more land tax on land I don't own, obviously? Otherwise, I think that it makes sense that the easement goes through my property, the road goes through my property. If you guys want to see CDs, I can sure hand them up to you. Um, but it seems like someone's got to own that property where the road is and it only makes sense to me that it goes down the the property lines, the original property lines. Um, and it adds up with the county assessors office. So doesn't someone have to own the property to even have an easement? Otherwise, it's something else. Isn't it? Isn't an easement uh through somebody that owns the property? And then my question would be, okay, so if the roads aren't owned by anybody, what it's can't hardly be an easement, can it? I mean, you're the maybe you could tell me about that, but.
This has been the discussion the whole time. I mean.
Well, there's there's a definite problem with, I mean, this is now I'm talking about me, but that's thirty percent more property I'm paying tax on.
I get it.
So it came from somewhere and it sure looks like it's a pretty simple answer that the roads are included. So if the roads are included, it kind of fixes the whole entire problem here, is my opinion.
That's what the plat says.
Plat.
That's what we have to go by.
What's the plat?
The original plat.
It's not what the plat says.
It's the map that was used to create the subdivision and then the the surveyor went out and used that and the information they had to determine the actual boundaries for surety purposes, and that's where the.
Well, he's way far off at thirty percent on land. It's a it sure looks to me anyway. That's just, and I'm just, I'm obviously not into this, but it sure looks to me like you go in the center of the roads and and do a math and it adds up to what you're paying taxes on. So if the I just would like to say if the roads were included, which it sure looks like to me they are, there's really not a problem with Mr. Mitchell dividing in the two fives and then everything's laid out that way. So that's my two cents on that.
Thank you for your comment.
Appreciate it.
Next. Please go forward.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Bagdonas. I live at twenty eight East Street in Alakot subdivision. And I too do not support uh the zoning request before you. I think it sets a precedent and you'll see a lot of small lots developed within the Alakot subdivision. And when I moved out there in nineteen eighty two, there were five homes. Now there are sixty two, but they are on large lots. So I think what was mentioned before is when you increase the in uh density of dwellings in an area and have more septic tanks and leach fields, I think there's uh the potential to have some uh problems with the water quality and we're trying to prevent that. So again, I do not support this zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Please go forward.
I'm George Hood. I live at thirty six South Street in the Alakot subdivision. And I guess my concern primarily is an environmental concern, which probably isn't very important. Um, I've lived here for about fifty years and I'm somewhat acquainted with the situation out in Sherman Hills. And I know Vern Hankley knows more about that than probably all of us can put together because he's been studying it for almost fifty years. And the problem out there basically boils down to you have a lot of septic systems and nitrates are building up in the water. And from talking to Vern, Vern earlier said those wells are about two hundred feet deep. Now, there are three aquifers out in Alakot, the Chugwater, Satanka, and uh, of course, the the big one down deep, the Casper. And I guess my problem is if you if you approve cutting the size of lots out there from five to two, two and a half, whatever it is, you are going to, in effect, double the amount of effluent coming from septic systems going into the system. Now, the people that have wells in that top aquifer are going to be the people who are going to be hurt because all of those nitrates and other chemicals are going to work their way through the soil and get into that water. Anyone's down gradient is going to be affected by it. And that seems to me to be a big problem that doesn't, no one seems to really want to think about or address here. Um. I I have a problem. I I would not personally, I'll be honest with you. I personally would not be probably affected by it because my well is down in the Casper. It's a thousand feet deep. But the people who are in the Chugwater and the Satanka, and there are some of those out there, it's quite a few of them in fact, who will definitely be affected for it over time. And that is going to make it very difficult for them to sell their homes if the water is contaminated. And I think these are the type of things you should really be looking at, not over whether someone owns ten point two acres or nine point six acres. Okay, that's immaterial if you're polluting the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please go forward.
My name is Jerry End. I live at sixty Russ Street. And I also am opposed to the amendment. Um, and not just for Mr. Mitchell's particular situation, but the precedent, and maybe we don't have a legal precedent, but the precedent is set in in the public's mind. As Joe said, you know, if you support his appeal, how can you not support the next guy's appeal in the same situation? That that doesn't even make sense. Um. The current situation with the lot size now, there's only one lot that's less than one, less than five acres. Um, everything else is between five acres and twenty five acres. Um, and the possibility of there being four lots on Mr. Mitchell's property doesn't fit with that overall um scheme of of rural living. Um. The other, the other thing is the road, the roads throughout the subdivision. If this breaking up of of larger lots into smaller lots continues, this could raise havoc with the roads. Um, currently about thirty percent of the people pay for all the road maintenance. Um, and with that, we can do, usually we can grade the roads twice a year. And maybe add a couple of hundred feet of base where it's needed the most. But you start adding that many more vehicles out there, that road's going to be untenable. Um. If this happens, we won't have enough money to support maintenance of the roads. And you're not going to help us as the county and the state's not going to help us. And that puts us in a really bad situation. So I am totally opposed to this. So yeah, thanks.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? Go on once? Point twice? Okay, well, you've had your chance to say, and thank you for your comments and thank you for being here as well. And now it is up to us to make a decision.
Um, one more question for staff.
Sure.
Now, I didn't understand the context here and I, and to some of the earlier discussion, I think that that this all is all about context and I've been a big proponent of when we make these zoning changes, we need to look at the the whole picture. Um, specifically with respect to the issue of septic systems, Mr. Gurch, remind us, what is it that triggers a septic tank suitability study when one goes to subdivide? And is that at all applicable to this situation?
Um, so are you asking whether it goes to the fireman department of fire and oil quality?
Would we need such a study under our current rules?
Correct. Yeah, we would. Yes. We, in this situation, it's in a platted subdivision. So that kicks it up to you. You're not using the the minor sub, you couldn't use the minor subdivision process. You'll have to use the major subdivision process, which will include um the studies that will go to DEQ and and to you guys.
Okay, even even though it will just be a two lot separation. Okay, thank you. That's that's exactly what I was wondering. Thank you.
And I'll add for all this. The reminder, what we do have before is to say zoning just supermamet, not a subdivision request, even though we're contemplating what might be happening in the future. Any further discussion? And someone like to make a motion?
I'll I'll view contrarian like I've been all along.
It is absolutely. You're right.
You're not here to have to be uniform all the time, so.
I'll I'll move to deny the application. I recommend the board of county commissioners deny the Mitchell zoning district amendment CDA dash zero one dash twenty five based upon the applicant's failure to adequately address the impact specified in ACZR chapter three section five subsection. Subsection three point five point three regarding priority growth area three in the comprehensive plan and section. Um. Section. Sorry, section, I guess it's A point three point little A, the compatibility with surrounding properties in that uh it does not meet the test of the zoning district designation of the surrounding properties. And is there anything else I'm supposed to say in my denial? Uh, I guess I said it. Period.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion?
Um, point of clarification, I'll get a look to staff. Um, a a tie vote defeats the motion, which case no action is taken. Are we required to take action or will that leave us?
I mean, typically you would you would do a motion to approve and then if that was denied, or if you didn't get that motion and.
The failure to approve a motion.
Yeah.
To approve is not a motion to deny.
It would be a denial.
It isn't a denial. It's a failure to take action. I think we've heard this discussion at Congress.
I'm not a.
You need an affirmative motion.
That is correct.
So I guess that would be the there would be no recommendation from this board. That be correct?
Let me check one thing.
And are we are we required to make a decision?
We're supposed to make a recommendation.
Okay, um, so yeah, then like the it'd be proper for someone to offer a motion to deny.
A motion to deny is what's on the floor.
Yeah.
If that motion is defeated.
Oh.
Then we've done nothing.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I got that inversion.
And if a motion.
So then a motion to approve.
And if that were, if if that were defeated.
Right.
Then there you'd be.
We don't have anything in the bylaws.
Can it go to the board without a recommendation? That's another way to ask my question perhaps.
Hmm. So I think you have two options. Um, you can either table further uh to have a a full form of five members, in which case a tie vote would be impossible. Or it can, you could move to proceed the application to the county commissioners, noting that there was no, I guess, dispositive motion for approval or denial. Uh, and it resulted in a tie.
Okay.
Whichever you would feel is appropriate.
So, Mr. Chair, um, it would seem the options before us are to let it go forward to the board without recommendation or to table it uh pending a a more fully populated commission would be my sense of where we are.
Well, we're going to take a vote.
I understand. I understand. We will have to take a vote if this is appropriate to understanding how that vote proceeds.
I will. I agree.
Okay.
Any other further discussion? In that case, we'll proceed the vote. Commissioner Hanning.
So if I vote aye in favor of my denial.
That's correct.
Okay, aye.
Uh, Commissioner Kornick?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankley?
No.
And I also vote no. So in fact, we do have a tie vote. Um. And how do we feel about sending this forward as a tie versus table?
Do they need to formally do the other? What's that? Do they need to formally do the other one? I don't know.
No, I think.
Can we?
Same thing.
Can we table maybe this procedural question? Again, we've done that once, or we?
I would recommend not at this point, um, just for the the practical facts that. Whatever this commission votes, the county commissioners are going to vote on it and ultimately decide.
Okay. Fair advice, but let's let's talk about that for a second. If. I mean, we we are not under a timeline. I guess we're on fishing ground for some of our decisions are made, you have to decide over the next days or else it goes forward.
Without, because there's no, there's no statutory, well, there's no statutory procedures for zoning district amendment, other than the general procedures for voting. Which are outlined in eighteen five two oh two. So. It's. Oh, actually. That's interesting. Certify a recommendation. And because of that language, certify a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners on zoning. So it would actually. I apologize for my earlier statement. Remembering that exact language in statute, there should be a affirmative recommendation one way or another coming from this commission.
Then, Mr. Chair, I move we table this. Until our next meeting, when we will have the ability to provide a non-tie vote.
Third second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, the motion carries, so we will table this to our true meeting. And hopefully we'll have. Either quorum. So that's what we do.
And that case, we have. Anything of that matter from speed?
As a concerned citizen, the acoustics are terrible in here. I. Don't know anything that's going on, and I doubt whether anybody else is. If you could simply clarify what you just did.
We took a vote. It's a tie. So we are going to table this matter to our next meeting, when we hopefully will have a full quorum of five people, so there will not be a tie. And we'll make a decision then.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, and if. Unless you want to stay around for the rest of our meeting, you're free to leave.
There's there's no discourtesy to leaving at the end of your item.
Will you accept public comment next week?
We can certainly discuss that amongst ourselves, and based on what happened here, I would guess there's likely that we would want to do that, but we'll see.
Should we watch three forty?
Yeah. Sorry.
Should really watch three forty.
Okay, uh.
The Willis zoning district amendment, CDA dash zero three dash two five is our next item. Joe?
All right. All right, uh, the applicant is Nathan Willis. The address is eighty-three Little Worth Lane. His request is to change zoning from ag to residential. There were some reviews. Jake Snyder, county engineer, had comments on potential subdivision, but no comments on this application. Holly Dyer, Laramie Rivers Conservation District Resource Specialist commented on erosion, soil degradation, and irrigation, and her full comments can be seen in the review section. And Taylor McCourt, District One Traffic Engineer for YDOT, had no comments on this application, but mentioned that Little Worth Lane may require additional improvements if a subdivision comes forward. The applicant has provided a complete application, including all required documentation. The planning department believes this proposed zoning district amendment generally follows the suggested the Albany County Comprehensive Plan. This property is currently zoned agricultural, which means the rural residential is compatible with existing land use. Of surrounding properties. The findings necessary for approval and applicant responses referenced in this report are adopted as findings reflecting. That the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts and the same are incorporated herein. The applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. And staff recommends approval of the Willis zoning district amendment application. ZDA zero three two five, adopting and incorporating staff analysis findings effect and conclusions law as each are stated in the staff.
Questions for staff beginning with, uh, I'm sure.
I wish we'd heard from game and fish when we win on the comments. They didn't. They didn't comment.
No.
Is there, um? Can you just remind me the new fencing regulations for wildlife friendly fencing? Would that apply here or would that come during the?
For the subdivision of what?
In the subdivision phase.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my only question.
Commissioner Hinckley?
Yeah, uh, looking at staff reports, um, the applicant described this as being under rural agricultural zoning. That is not correct.
Yeah, I pointed it out a couple of times saying. Um, that this is ag and he's requesting to go to rural residential and that the surrounding properties. Are ranchette, not. Uh, rural ag, I believe is what he says.
Yeah, uh, we don't. We we created that zone, but we don't really have any of those so far. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, it was not even called that. It's ag residential is what it's called.
Yeah, I guess.
Um, so.
Um, the applicant describes the the. Comparison to where this irrigated, but it is not irrigated at present is my understanding, except.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't think so.
I I thought that was a little bit of a stretch, not that it's directly relevant to us. Then I just had a suggested edit. As you know, I continue to chew on the. The precise wording of staff reports and so forth, so I'll just throw this in as an editorial comment. Uh, under the. Proposal to deny, if we were to make that, the suggested language is recommend the board accounting officials and so forth. Based upon the applicant's failure to adequately address the impacts, as I've come in in previous meetings. Address seems like.
To meet the following, yeah, I believe it's.
So I would like that to, my suggestion would be, again, with Mr. Ayers' approval and you guys, that we would change our default. Motion to be failure to support the findings required.
I think the actual wording is comply with. So if you plan to deny it, it needs to say comply with. That is the wording for, uh. Uh, chapter three, section five, G. Three.
Okay, that that, so it's just failure to comply with, is that you would suggest that be changed?
Correct.
But then we. Well, okay, if that's what the rules require, just like the, let's get all those. Words exactly lined up correctly in that adequately addressed.
We're seeing a little. Yep.
A little weak to it. Did Mr. You act like you might want to add something to that.
Uh, well, we're. I was just ensuring that this is still under the. The old regulations, which were not adopted last Tuesday.
Yeah, and how will those?
Didn't we change, which I believe the verbiage was changed.
We'll have two more. I believe it says meets the following criteria now.
Okay.
Um, and we'll have two more applications under the old one.
All right, that that was my concern again, is just let's get these lined up as closely as we possibly can, and perhaps. Mr. Ayers and his followers will appreciate that as as they get to arguing. Um, second question was, uh, public comments. Have we heard any, got any? That you are aware of?
I didn't. It would have been passed on.
Okay. Uh, thank you. That's the only questions I had for staff.
And I don't have anything. Is applicant here?
At least so, yeah.
Would you like to please step forward and? Do you have anything you'd like to add to your application, Ken? Otherwise, if you want to make questions from us.
I don't. Not that I had planned. I guess the only thing I've heard so far with. Is if it's currently irrigated or not, which it is not, but to make it a more. Fitting ag property, it would be to make it more. Uh, beneficial to the use of the property, I would have to use what my well has already been permitted to do, which is. Irrigate the property. Um, so that's where that comparison is that's in that application. Um, other than that, I didn't have anything else I planned to talk about, so.
Very pleased with you. Uh, we have just a quick question. You, the well is up to the task. I mean, you've got yourself a.
Yes.
Multi-hundred gallon well out there.
Well, it was approved for sixty gallons in the month, which at the moment is only. Has a pump large enough for thirteen, so that's all. But it's pumping out right now, but I am, I have talked to the state engineer's office. And the, um. Natural resource analysis at the state engineer's office. And she has. Looked through the different options, and like I said, that's where that other option would be to upgrade the what the pump. And pull the full sixty out that I'm permitted to pull. In which case I would actually irrigate the property. And that would be a larger pole off the property or off off that water table, which I believe is chug water. I'm not sure. But, um, that'd be a much larger pole than. Other options.
Yeah, no, I see. Thank you. And that good explanation for what I read there was. Okay, I was pretty sure where that was going, so thank you for that. So I have Mr. Chair.
Diana?
That's all clear?
I don't know. Do we have any questions? Okay. Well, I just want to, I say, I'd like to say I appreciate that you've come in with a subdivision that's proposing larger lots than the surrounding lots. Um, I I think that's more in keeping with the existing properties out there, so I appreciate that you. That you came in with a with a size that, uh. Respects what I think people moved out there to to live around. Right.
Okay. And I have anything either, so thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
So, discussion.
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. Chair?
I'd be happy to take a motion.
I'll move we approve the board accounting commissioners. We recommend the board accounting commissioners approve the Willis zoning district amendment, CDA oh three.
Michael.
Two five.
We need a public hearing. Public hearing.
I'm sorry. Yes, we're supposed to have, thank you. We are supposed to have a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on this application? Please step forward.
I gotta go forward.
My apologies.
That's okay. My name is Dennis Sullivan. I'm in the, uh. That little subdivision, ten ho- ten houses right off two eighty-seven. We call it High Plains subdivision. There, and yeah, we're all just five acre lots. I'm kidding me, but, uh, it's a nice little community. Our our one point of address, and I think I've got another neighbor here tonight, is really, uh. With the way our little group is set up. That we really maintain. Uh, all the road that comes into that area right now. We manage that as far as, uh. Addressing it, grading it, keeping up the speed how it has to be and such like that. And that's probably a real concern that we're looking at is how that cooperative is going to happen. And work out because technically, uh, Little Worth. And, you know, it is a gravel road for our for our part of it. It's probably about, uh. Quarter mile, a third of a mile long total that every quarter mile, a third of a mile long total that everybody would be addressing. Some of us others are up off of Phantom Road there that really aren't impacted by it, but. There's a, there's a lot more traffic that comes into there now. And, uh, some of it's a little high speed in nature as far as how it's traveled. And, uh, you know, how we can manage it. I mean. We we just like make sure it stays as a really nice community and how it's worked out and, uh, you know. We know there's going to be development out there. We we, you know, we're going to grow. We we got to admit that. But, uh, we just want to make sure it's managed properly and, uh, addressed. You know, in the correct way as far as to be able to take care of. So. That's my thoughts on.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
David, uh, how are situations like that handled or typically handled or are these are unique situations?
Uh, it's not unique. Um, the. I mean, that that doesn't apply to the zoning district amendment we're talking about, but when a subdivision, if a subdivision is proposed. Um, one of the requirements is to, um. Come up with a solution to make sure the roads are maintained with. Basically working with those that maintain the roads. Um, so if if they have a a road maintenance agreement or or something on that road that they will, you know, the another property owner will be using as part of their subdivision. Um, there would need to be some type of an agreement or or talking or or some, there are some options in our our regulations, but. That situation will need to be addressed as part of the subdivision process.
Okay. Well, thank you for comment. That that's a valid comment. Any other members of the public who wish to speak? Either president or all, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Tom Burkett, B U R K E T T. I live at seventy-eight N O Bridge Loop. So our property is on the west side of the. Uh, property that you're talking about, and I guess I don't really have any objection or anything, especially if they're larger lots. It's just we lived there for twenty-six years and you you look out there and it's all wide open and I am. A little disappointed now that there is something, but I figured we made it twenty-six years, so I'm happy for that. So I, um, if I guess one question is if they are like ten acres or larger lots in the future, would that ever have a chance of being like half to five acres the way the zoning is now?
They'd have to come in and change the zoning, but yeah.
Okay. That's, well, anyway, I'm getting old, so maybe it won't matter. Anyway.
You're good for another forty years. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Name's Travis Price. I live at twenty-two Phantom Road. I'm new to all this, so I apologize on proper forum and all that. Um. I have some of my concerns, like the. You know, later on subdividing it, what's that going to do to our border in the future? What's that going to do? Uh, to our scenery, uh, wildlife. I already know. Haven't lived out there as as long as they have, but in the short time that I've been out there, wildlife is gone. It's, I mean. At least cut in half and we do this and it's going to be gone. Uh, what? What does that do to future land value? What does that do? You know, you take away the the, uh. Scenery, does that affect land value? I I don't know. Um. And then I don't know either what are we doing? Ten acre lots? Five acre lots? What's the proposal on that? Um. And then do we have guarantees if? Groundwater, we we don't have groundwater anymore. Is there any guarantees to us? Uh. You know, for for what happens to our values. Um. And then my understanding is the the it's not proper here, if I understand right on talking about the HOA stuff, things like that. But that would be probably my biggest concerns. Our land value, our future water. Does it get? Subdivided again in the future. Um. Those would be my main main concerns.
Travis, I would encourage you to ask those questions to that man right there at your convenience.
Okay.
Anytime you like. That's what his job is, ask questions like that.
All right, thank you.
And I don't refer to Mr. Gurch. I was joking, but yeah.
But but so we're sure what we're voting on, it is not, it's ten acres, yes?
Average ten acres.
Five acre, average, average ten, five acre, so.
With the possibility of doubling houses, so that could end up being twenty-five at some point in the future, right?
They'd have to go through this process.
Oh, okay.
The application before us is to go to ten acre lots.
Gotcha.
And cluster them, I mean, average them out, but ten acres.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Online? May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Remove and close the public hearing?
So second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Okay, so now we will continue on to a. Motion.
I think this may be the first one of these I should create the motion on. Mr. Chair. I recommend, I. Move that the Plowing and Zoning Commission recommended the board accounting commissioners approval of the Willis zoning district amendment, CDA oh three two five. Adopting and incorporating staff analysis findings of fact, which is law as each are stated in this staff report.
So it's a second. So, aside him.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? In that case, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Hinckley? Aye. Mr. Gornick?
Aye.
Mr. Hanny?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all for attending. Are there uh any citizen comments online? Nope, not anymore. Staff updates.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, planning and zoning commission members. I provided just a brief summary of what's been going on with things we've been working on. Um, at the May sixth meeting, zoning resolution, chapter five, and the other zoning resolution amendments to the district, the district member process were approved, so what you sent on to them was, was approved, so that's now part of our regulations. When they've been updated online, so everything should be up to par. Um the zoning resolution, major street plan standards, um, so we, we created a first draft in the planning office and um we're discussing things with the county attorney at this point. We're we're trying to, to see how to do this or if we can do this and not cause us legal problems. Um, so we're still in the process of discussing that and, and coming up with a draft. Uh, we may just have to, to do it in the subdivision regulations, which is in what we're working on now. Um, but, but yeah, that it's being talked about and discussed. Um, hopefully we'll have something to at least uh, tell you near the next month or so on that. Um also been doing some research in the planning department on the battery energy storage system standards. Um we're, we're drafting some regulations and just collecting information. Um, this is one of those things where nobody has any regulations in the state of Wyoming. Um, there are some, some regulations, but they're kind of here in the southwest and here over, you know, in the east. Um, but there's not a whole lot um, of information. Um, there is information, actually the planning association, which the National American Plan Association, which me and Joe belong to. Um, there's some research they've done, got some information from them on those. Um, so, so hopefully we'll, we'll pull something together for you guys to start looking at. Um then the MAPY Environmental Justice Grant that um, we had submitted. Um, it's gone, federal government terminated that, so it's no longer in existence, so um, we're gonna, we'll continue to um, seek funding opportunities for this project. I mean, I think it's an opportunity to hone what the project looks like and so the next time this comes around or we have an opportunity, we'll have a little bit better put together project. So, um, one of the things we don't have, have on here is we are working on the subdivision um, update to chapter six and beyond basically in the subdivisions, um regulations. So these are like the road standards, um, some of the engineering things. We've worked with Jake Schneider, the county engineer um, to help us with some of those and we're trying to piece that all together. We should, we're, I think we had a couple of questions for the county engineer and hopefully we'll have something to get to, to read by next month. We'll see if that, how that works out, but um, but yeah, that's kind of what we're working on. If you have any questions on any of these things, happy to try to answer the questions.
Or if you understand road engineering.
That'd be incredibly helpful.
If not. Some base, you got the base, then you got the surface, the wearing surface. Talking about like uh, curve radius.
Yeah.
Um, fill slope?
Fill slope, that's the one.
Don't quite know what fill is, so that's a good place to start. Um, so yeah, like those, the, I mean, the true like engineering yeah, parts of a road profile. Um yeah, I can't just come up with those. Well, you talked to me forty years ago when I was an engineer in the army. Not now. Engineer a time machine, I guess, now. Go ahead.
Um of those of us of limited mental capacity, could you just remind us conceptionally what the amendments were in those first two categories?
Okay, so the, the chapter five amendments, those are two zoning certificate standards. We, we've basically taken what we have on our applications and put them in there. So like the site plan, we have specific site plan standards that we have. Um, and then some more stuff in the zoning certificate and the conditionings, I think we made some tweaks to that. And who it's sent to, yeah.
Yeah.
Some of that. Um, the, the zoning district amendments, that was where we, we created a legislative process for big, you know, zoning changes and then adjudicative process, which is for the lot by lot, like we, we keep seeing, so. Um, we added that, we, we, we redid the standards a little bit for that. Um, yeah, so that ring a bell?
Well, so what come a year was Mr. Wilms' earlier statement that we had uh, changed the criteria to not take into account surrounding use. What, what was that about?
Uh, I think he took, I think he was referring to, and I'm not sure. Zoning, like, we don't refer to zoning, it's, it's, we refer to the surrounding land uses and not to the the, the zoning or something like that.
Uh, is that what it says? And I, I don't know, that's what I took from what he said.
I, I didn't remember us.
I, yeah, it's hard to know in any conceptual way, but maybe we could be reminded.
It's like, by the time things leave this commission, you know, or by the time they actually get voted on, it's like, what is that?
Well, no, I'm totally with you there. But I think I saw some eyes raised down the desk from me.
So it's a compatibility with surrounding uses, the adjudicative zoning district amendment is compatible with the type intensity, character and scale of existing land uses. So, yeah, it's not truly on a zoning district. It's like, it's actually looking at intensity, character and scale. I mean, I would say that that's like, you know, actual lot sizes as opposed to um surrounding zoning districts.
Okay. And, and now that Mr. Wilms is back with us, the question is your earlier comment about the new rules didn't look at adjacent zoning. But they do look at adjacent uses.
Yeah.
So it sounds like the provision, which would be compatible, well, that we were doing, was, was more expansive in that sense and less tied to the precedent we were talking earlier. If the guy right next to you zone small lot residential, but we find you to be utterly incompatible with what's actually going on, that latter is the reason for us to make our decisions. Okay. Sorry, I don't know where that came from. Um then I was just wondering, uh, what the, the street program is, is a flows from the Laramie Growth Plan? Correct?
Uh, well, the major street plan is a separate document approved by USAC County.
And look at that.
City. But, I mean, the principle of, of reserving right of way and through you know, permits and those types of things, that is, is supported by the growth plan. So they're, they're kind of tied together in my opinion, but.
Hey, so, so remind me, what, and, and maybe the answer is we're all on hold, what, what are we doing in the realm of the, of the growth plan? I understand the, the LGA has been tabled indefinitely by the county commissioners.
IGA.
IGA.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the LGA is in the IGA, so anyway, that one, uh, but uh, is your staff, your office proceeding with other aspects of the growth plan?
I mean, the connection part, um, you know, transportation connections, make sure that we reserve that, that's what we're kind of looking at. And that's one of the things that it supports in the growth plan, so that's, that's an area that we're looking at. Um, we, we haven't delved into like, you know, potential zoning. I mean, we have, we, we've started before everything, I mean, everything changed where we started and, and we're making a map based on the map and like a zoning map based on the, the land use map in the growth plan, but I haven't done much on that um, recently. Um
Well, that's, maybe the streets was related, because
It is related, yes.
That will possibly come, but within this periphery, we want to have reservations of right of ways.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then, Mr. Chair, I might just add one thing to your last point. The city council had a kind of a general meeting here a couple of weeks ago and the question of their monitoring well program came out. And then we were told by the um, city manager that they were going to hear a presentation on that later this month and then they were gonna put that out for peer review. So just FYI, that program is proceeding and there will be opportunity for anybody who's interested to look that over. So, thank you.
Laura, Diana?
Mr. Chair, just, um, I, I don't know if uh the Teton County Conservation District at one time, I don't know if it came from federal funding forces or federal funding sources, but they did, um, they funded a test your own well program where they would give people like a well testing kit and where people could take their well samples to a designated lab and get, get results back and then the Teton County Conservation District sort of you know, tallied up the data or kept, kept track of the data. So I don't know if the Laramie River Conservation District has any money or interest in doing anything like that for rural wells. And like I said, I don't know if the ultimate source of the funding was from the federal government kind of through. Um, but that, they may be someone you could partner with on trying to see if there's any other options.
Oh, sure.
The well monitoring program that you, you guys put effort into apply for and then had it for now disappear.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good thought. And they do have quite a few programs, so I, I just, I haven't looked into all of them or whatever, but something we can look into for sure.
Right, right, yeah.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Any communications from the city with regards to the LGA?
Uh Okay.
I'm just gonna, um, the, the Laramie River Conservation District at least has a cost sharing program for people to sample their own wells.
Okay.
And then maybe share that data. Um, they'll split the price until they run out of money for it.
Gotcha. I know they do a lot of cost shares, that's
Yeah.
We do our, um, our landfill, our dump day, tire, roof, refrigerator vouchers every year for for everybody and basically we pay a dollar, they pay a dollar. We, we, we split the, the cost basically.
Yeah, and they do cost shares for landowners to do projects, so, and I, I believe well sampling is one of them.
Gotcha.
So, um, people would still have to pay half of it, but I mean, we check a well once in a while anyway, and you should, so.
Yeah.
If we could add some relevant parameters that we're looking for. The well monitoring program, that could be a really good idea.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, David. Commissioner comments? I will thank you all for going along and seeing to their request from the public tonight to offer some other comments. Uh, that was a decision. Uh, especially when people aren't happy. Uh, at least they can be heard. So, I think that's the right thing to do.
Yeah, but accommodating our schedule and, and our procedures, but we ought to try to accommodate folks as best we can.
Yeah. No, that was good. Um Yeah, I think it's about.
Burning issues in your
No, I, I mean, I, I guess I'll just say one thing about precedent. I talked with Matt briefly about that in advance of the meeting. And, um I mean, it's, it's interesting to think about. I mean, if, if we should end up proving in a single, a small residential out there, obviously it does make it easier to prove the succeeding lots. There's really no way to get away from that, yet. Matt has said quite clearly that each of these is basically a one-off decision. It does not, in any sense, legal sense, establish precedent.
Yeah.
We just have to apply our reasoning. There's a psychological precedent to that, that's, is what it is and you can't just like, we're supposed to be looking at zoning district amendment, not the follow-on subdivision. You really can't really separate the two entirely. And we just have to do the best we can. That's what we're here for.
Yeah, and I, I think we do have a precedent of looking at the worst case for a specific
Oh, it should.
And so we had to be okay with four lots on that spot and, and I'm not, so.
Well, you do have to, you, you have to separate subdivision and, and the zoning district if you want to use, uh, land use plans.
Right, but, but we're making this, uh, the zoning change, um everything's on the table. I mean, we're, we're trying to move in the direction of best thing for the welfare of the county and its morals, I think, even in the statute, so.
Yeah, that, that was my problem with that, is the precedent that we already have of looking at that and that did not seem okay to me.
I guess I'll, well, I, is there any interest in addressing, um, the effect of a tie vote?
Sure.
Uh, I already drafted an amendment.
Wow.
And send it to Michael, so, yeah.
An amendment for bylaws or?
Yeah. Um, I mean, it was just a starting point, but it would be that in the event of a tie vote um, on it, on a motion to accept or deny, um, it shall be considered that the matter is denied. That's that's the thing. I mean, and that can be played with, but.
So if there were a motion to approve and it failed, that would be accepted as a denial rather than a failure to approve. That's the subtlety that we're talking about.
It would be considered to be a full-on denial. If it, it, only if it was, yeah, because of a tie vote.
So if there would be no affirmative motion to deny, that would just be the
No, well, not, it depends, it depends on the vote. If it fail, if the motion to deny failed uh, three votes against, then you would have to go back with a motion to deny, because you would have that motion. If that
I didn't follow that, sorry.
Okay, so, if, if the, if you, if there's a motion to deny and that, uh, there are two, or sorry, a motion to approve and there are two votes for, three votes against.
It fails.
Then it fails, and then there has to be an affirmative motion to deny, because there is not a tie vote.
Right, although whether the vote was three, two against or tied, that's parliamentarily the same. It's, the motion fails on a tie, that's standard.
Correct, but then
Fails because it was five to zip or fails because it was two to two, that's, that's simply motion denied.
Correct, but then when you can't make a motion, when there can be no motion that will carry either way, that's when it's treated affirmatively as a denial.
Okay, under your suggestion.
Under, under my draft. Yeah, you know, it's it's up to you, but.
Okay, I mean, that's, we're now augmenting Robert's rules kinds of procedures.
Robert's rule is for parliamentary bodies, um, which are hundreds, hundreds of people.
Yeah.
Personally, I think that they have, um, that they're way too complicated for small governmental bodies.
I, I, I agree, but the place to start to look for thoughtful precedent.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I was looking like how Robert's rules treats that and I couldn't find anything beyond it's denied if there's a tie.
Okay, that's a correction, then it requires an affirmative motion. That's, this has come before the county commissioners before, where they treated it like a, the defeat of a motion to approve or deny is taken as
The opposite.
And, and it isn't.
Yeah.
So it needs to be an affirmative vote. Um, and in that particular case, I guess that we're having this free-ranging discussion. Um I think it's an important topic and would like to see all five of us weigh in on it. I mean, by, my sense, why I made my motion to table it is because I want to have a, a larger discussion, including our, our full membership.
Well, and that could be
Because I was trying to kick the can down the road.
Yeah, no, it could be, um, it could be where like, so, so long as there, um you know, is still time within which to make a decision. Uh, then it's not treated as a, then it, it should be tabled. You know, you could uh, then it's not treated as a, then it should, it should be tabled. You know, you could have something like that.
Yeah. Okay, so we can talk about that when you bring that bylaw forward, but that would be the counter argument, is that no, we should resolve tie votes rather than having them mean something that they didn't really say on their face.
Yeah, because I mean, it was like, once I actually thought about the language of 185202, where for zoning, you know, there, there has to be a certified recommendation from planning and zoning. I mean, I can't say that the, the absence of a recommendation is a recommendation.
That just, yeah. So that's kind of weird.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Interesting.
And, uh, I suppose we can have this as a did line up next time also.
Sure.
Bylaws. Anything else? I'm gonna make someone happy here. Next regular meeting will be June 11th at 5:00 PM in this room. This meeting's adjourned.
Sure.